I just want to thank everyone for being here today. For board supervisors, good afternoon. For June, call to order at twelve o'clock. Uh, tab, uh, questions by supervisor Hernandez?
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, supervisor Hernandez. Um, do say you want to lead us through our hospital?
Yes. So if you're participating by Zoom as an attendee, you have the ability to provide public comment when the time comes. There's a raise your hand icon. If you're participating by phone, um, when the time comes, it's star nine and that raises your hand. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, have a certificate of.
So move Mr. Chair Gilio.
Second. Second.
Second, Mr. Chair.
You motion by supervisor Gilio, second by supervisor Hernandez. All of the favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, there is no public comment today because it is a special meeting. Now we'll go directly to regular agenda. Uh, an update from the health department before I go to Tracy. Uh, CEO Reyes, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do. Uh, I want to first thank the chair of the Board of Supervisors and the public for, um, open, for making time available today uh, for this special meeting. Uh, due to the content, um, that has been coming out from the state, um, it was really imperative. Uh, timing is really of the essence, uh, to meet, and this was the earliest that we could meet uh, with your board and the public. And really this was, uh, to benefit the public, um, business community and allowing them more time to prepare for this Friday, which we'll be discussing a little bit more with our health officer as well as our Health and Human Services Director in a little bit here. With that, I did also want to highlight, just to share with the public as well as your board, the meetings that we've been having for COVID discussion. In the month of March, um, we've had actually five meetings. Uh, two of them regular and two special during one week's time. That was one with our, our, um, local jurisdictions on a Monday and on the twentieth, another special board meeting. That's right when this pandemic started, as well as the thirty-first. Uh, we had a regular meeting in April, the seventh, special on the fourteenth, regular on the twenty-first, special on the twenty-eighth, as well as in May. The fifth was a regular board meeting, a special meeting in between that, the twelfth and the nineteenth was regular and the twenty-sixth was the special. And then this month, we've had a, a regular board meeting on the second and the ninth. So I just wanted to share that we have been, um, working. I want to thank staff. It, it takes a lot of time to create the agendas and, um, a- along with probably the hundreds of other meetings that we're having to attend, uh, to prepare for these meetings and, and make sure that we're, we're adhering to state and, um, and federal guidelines for COVID. So I just wanted to thank everybody for all their time. Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention in regards to the meeting itself is that, with a special board meeting, um, all we are required is a twenty-four hour notice, notice for that, a regular board meeting seventy-two. And obviously an emergency meeting can take place, uh, if the board so chooses immediately. So, um, with that, I also wanted to ask the board, um, during this time is to, um, request from your board, a, um, probably a regular, we're looking at a regular board meeting in, in, uh, July, the twenty-first, uh, to obviously kind of follow up with COVID. We have a whole month off and maybe have this as an open discussion. Maybe we don't have to talk about it now, but maybe after the presentation and during this, this particular agenda item, I would like to, um, have some dialogue with your board of, of next steps with regards to the me, um, meetings that we have. So with that, um, that's all I have. I just wanted to share with you and, um, I'll go ahead and hand it off to Tracy and maybe we can talk about this a little bit, uh, later. Tracy?
Thank you. Any comments from the members before I allow Tracy to make her presentation?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may ask, uh, do you want to have that discussion about the July twenty-first meeting now or later?
Um, let's just do it right now, we brought it up. Is everyone okay with the like twenty-first meeting? Supervisor Gilio?
Uh, yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Yeah, supervisor Medina, yes.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Tullow?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, we won't have a meeting until like, thank you, supervisor Tullow.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Board of Supervisors.
Our.
Oh, just so, uh, just so that's a regular meeting, we'll put that on the next agenda, uh, to formalize that and have the vote, vote to amend our regular meeting schedule so that July twenty-first meeting will be a regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right, Tracy, go ahead with the presentation.
Good afternoon, thank you, and I'm here for a brief presentation on public health update. Next slide, please. We'll say next slide. I just wanted to, um, advise you all that we've updated our dashboard again, trying to, um, provide more detailed information. We added some tabs here to the dashboard. We added the hospitalized tab, which is in the upper right-hand corner. We update that daily on, um, statistics on hospitalizations related to COVID nineteen. We also updated the, um, positive cases from, um, the two different testing sites in the middle of the screen. There'll be twenty-five positives from Optum Serve and eighty-four from the hospital clinics. Those are cumulative tests of positive. Um, the new case tab is still there. And then we are also updating where the new cases come from. That's been a request, so the cases from yesterday tested out of a hospital clinic site. So we just wanted to advise the board, the community of the new updated dashboard, um, and keep everybody as informed as possible and provide as much detailed information as we can. So this will be updated daily. I just wanted to give you that info. Next slide, please. So just wanted to provide an update on our county variants. As most of you are aware, um, the governor did release guidance on June fifth regarding additional sectors in stage three. Um, the guidance provides certain information, um, on public health modifications that should be implemented prior to reopening this board meeting. We will be discussing, uh, the health officer will be addressing the board and the community on, um, where we are as a county as well as advancing into stage three. Advise people that these were statewide guidance was provided on day camps, schools and school-based programs, updated child care program and for providers and for some other family-friendly practice for employers, employers and support for working families. Um, those are available on the website of the statewide industry guidance. The other guidance, um, is related to variants counties, which we are a variant county. As you see, I have the specific guidances that were released, there were twelve guidances released on last Friday. A new, um, guidance or added to the guidance was movie theaters. That was added yesterday, so I wanted to make sure that the, the community and the board was aware that movie theaters now are able to advance once the health officer approves the stage three opening, um, to limited capacity. So it's really important that we, um, read the guidance and see, I think it's similar guidance as to the face base. I think it's twenty-five percent of capacity of their facility and there's some guidance around how the seating should be and, and so on and so forth. So, um, that was encouraging that they added movie theaters to the, to the guidance. Um, and that is also, um, if you could advance to the next slide. Oh, I thought I had it, sorry, I don't have the iPhone next one, I think. But, um, the following sector are not allowed yet in the stage three advancement. I just wanted to make sure that people had this available. Um, the website is covidnineteen.ca.gov and that's where all guidance is. So variants county guidance is on the county-by-county guidance and the statewide guidance is listed under industry for the entire state. Next slide, please. So in our county, we're recommending that, um, the businesses and activities follow the guidance through their industry. We're still asking that you self-certify and post, um, the self-certification outside of your business. There's always a risk that the guidance not be followed, that the county will be at risk of a possible surge and will need to have some possibly setback. Um, and we've gotten a lot of calls on plans and what for, and different types of things, questions that people are having about if they submit a plan, can they open? And what we're recommending is as the state of California moves through the process of reopening, um, they'll continue to publish guidance for businesses and activities currently allowed under that stage. Um, the San Diego County Public Health is obligated to adhere to the state-issued guidance for businesses and activities. We do not have the authority to allow activities that are not specifically allowed under these licenses, nor is it our position to evaluate or endorse any particular plan. Instead, we are asking, um, the businesses take responsibility to review the guidance. And if the business wishes to reopen, to refer to date guidance and to use their best judgment in perverting these guidances of reopening plan. And all the guidances are listed there at the website. We've had several businesses and activities email us and say it's okay to do this and we're really wanting people to refer back to the guidance and because they know the best about their activities and their businesses to see if they fall within that guidance. Next slide, please. So this is just an update on the testing at Optum Serve. Um, it looks like these tests have, of June eighth, uh, two thousand and two hundred and twenty-seven individuals. We've had twenty-five positives and we're still pending almost all hundred results. Next slide, please. So now, uh, Dr. David Gialarducci is on the call. He is going to be providing an update and answer any possible questions that the board may have. Or, Dr. Gialarducci?
Uh, thank you, Tracy. Good afternoon. So as Tracy said, through the stage three implementation, we're following the skates, state schedule. We're not, um, really empowered to deviate from that. So, uh, we recommend everybody does consult the website if they have particular question, questions about their industry. Just, uh, generally about public health, we, uh, uh, are seeing a small uptake, uh, uptick in cases here in San Benito County, but probably more so on the state and national level, likely related to the Memorial Day weekend, uh, but also the relaxation of some of the shelter-in-place uh, orders that have been in place since March. Uh, we don't know yet the effect of, uh, the many nationwide protests, but that may, uh, lead, uh, to an increase in the next one to two weeks. Um, I will mention that the state does monitor our metrics, uh, and, uh, looks closely at, um, our rate of increase, our testing rates and so forth. And, uh, they may actually revoke our variants, uh, if issues do arise. Uh, fortunately, we're in a good spot right now. But this graph that you see here, uh, reflects the, uh, what's called the, uh, the R-value. This is, um, how many people one infected person infects. Uh, and you can see back in March, we're kind of, we're dealing with a wildfire at that point. The R-number, the R-value at that point was almost one point five, meaning every infected person will, will cause one and a half more infections. And, uh, we, um, we surrounded the fire, we contained it, we got it under control by around mid-April or late April. And you can see that that line remained relatively steady. Essentially, we had a containment line around it. We were, we were taking care of hotspots and kind of keeping it under control. What's most concerning is you can see toward the beginning of June is that we're starting to see an uptick, uh, which is bringing us back to kind of late March levels. So we just have to remain vigilant on this and, uh, this, I think, is a good graphical representation of what's happening in the state of California. Uh, next slide, please. So with, with respect to the facial covering order, and I, I know this has been probably one of the most controversial things that, that, uh, we've done. This is, uh, an order that I have kept in place, um, that was originated by, by my predecessor and was a, um, an order that was consistent with all of the Bay Area health officers. Um, and so, uh, it has, uh, become dated though with the new, uh, industry guidances come out. Uh, it no longer applies just to essential businesses. So we will have to modify the facial covering order. We're be, working on it right now. But some of the modifications will be just applying it to activities that are currently open for the state opening plan. Um, I just wanted to give you a little more background information on facial covering. And, um, there was a recent survey done of, of county health officers in California and forty-one of forty-seven support a statewide facial covering order. Uh, most state, most counties in the state do have mandatory, uh, orders. Those who do not tend to be more rural and have very few cases, uh, much, uh, lower numbers of cases than we have. Um, they, you know, uh, as I said before, that about thirty percent of people with COVID are asymptomatic. They never have symptoms or, uh, they may be pre-symptomatic. That is, they're, they're infectious, um, several days before they actually come down with any signs of illness. We don't have, um, any vaccine or medication really to prevent this or very limited in terms of treating it. Uh, we do have relaxed shelter-in-place orders, as you know, which we've been talking about. We have limited hospital capacity. The only real preventive tools left are facial covering and, um, and contact tracing. So, uh, we have to be careful that, uh, we, um, we keep these controls in place at this point. I still continue to, um, order that, that happens. Um, they reduce the risk of spread, they reduce pain and suffering. But I wanted to point out maybe four important reasons for our businesses and economy, why this particular order is important. Uh, one, uh, is that it helps businesses protect their essential workers. It helps them stay open. Once your workforce becomes ill and you have to shut down, that's obviously bad for business. Two, uh, there are a lot of people that are leery about visiting businesses at this point. They're still afraid, they're vulnerable. Having a, uh, county-wide facial covering order helps reassure customers who are wary of visiting our businesses. Uh, number three, uh, it does reduce, it doesn't eliminate, but it does reduce the chances that we have to revert back to stage one. That would be, you know, what we were doing in March. And then number four, and perhaps most importantly, is it takes the heat off of business owners who may have, um, uh, customers that are upset about having to wear a facial covering. It takes the heat off of business owners and it places it directly on me. And I think, again, that is something that, uh, our business owners might, might appreciate. So, um, so I'm happy to take any questions at this point, um, but, uh, that's it going forward.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Yeah, the only question I have, uh, doctor, is dealing with the schools opening. You know, I understand, I've received a lot of letters and a lot of people have spoken to me in regards to what, uh, authority does the Board of Supervisors along with the public health officer? What authority do we have, if any whatsoever?
Yeah. Great question. We really don't have a lot of authority with respect to that. There are, as a statewide guidance for schools, but also the Department of Education has released a very detailed, um, guidance, uh, for schools in the state. I think the schools are obligated to follow each of those. Uh, the DOE, uh, guidance is pretty challenging. In fact, more so than the, than the health department, the state health department guidance for schools. But schools are going to have to make a decision, um, what they can, they can implement on a practical basis. But essentially, um, they're going to be responsible for the safety of their students. Uh, I don't think we're in a position to, um, uh, as the health department to approve or not approve their plans. We're going to have to leave it to their best judgment. We're ha- happy to provide support, answer questions, that sort of thing. But ultimately, the, the, uh, opening plans for them are going to be the responsibility of, um, the Board of Education and the individual schools.
Uh, thank you. The, uh, second, the second thing I have is dealing, of course, with the, uh, never need mask ordinance. You know, I, I understand when it was implemented, I understand why it was implemented. There's not a lot of, uh, impact there at the time and there was not a lot of, uh, information available. Through the past couple of months, we've seen a lot of, uh, innovation. Talking on both sides, getting that, yes, masks are being, oh, masks aren't helping. When you're looking at having a close proximity to someone, that if you're outside, you're let, the chances decrease dramatically in order to, uh, to, um, have that virus. So where do we feel or what are the metrics in the future to gauge when we would be able to, you know, not have a mandatory mask wearing, but possibly just a highly, highly recommended?
Yeah. That's a great question. I think that, um, there's a couple of practical considerations. One is obviously when you're outside and you're able to maintain separation, I don't think a mask makes any difference whatsoever. And so, uh, I want people to feel reassured that you're safe on hiking trails, even if you pass somebody, um, going in the opposite direction. There's almost no risk associated that whether you're wearing a mask or not. It's when you get into places where other people are and you're not able to maintain that separation, that's where, um, somebody who inadvertently sneezes or coughs is not going to be maybe deploying viruses on common touch surfaces like near a cat register or something like that. Um, so that's the, the logic behind it. As far as when the mask, uh, order can go away, uh, it, um, it's hard to say. You know, the masks are not perfect and I'm the first to say, especially homemade masks themselves really meet very little standard. If you can hold the mask up to the light and you can see light through it, it's probably not making a lot of difference. It's probably not effective. Um, there's at least one health officer in the state who's kind of put his foot down and say, I'm not going to order facial coverings because, um, they're not as good as mental masks. And at some point, we may have to move to medical masks because they're becoming more available. But don't think we're quite at that stage yet. Uh, that said, it's an imperfect solution, but it's really one of the few tools we have. Um, I think once we have, uh, uh, very low growth, maybe we have, maybe at some point we develop herd immunity. Maybe at some point we have a vaccine or maybe there's, uh, you know, an effective medication we can take to help prevent the spread. Then that's when the mask, um, order may go away. Um, I think that the state is struggling with this question overall. And again, if they say the vast majority of health officers support a statewide order, that may come out. They, they haven't done that yet, but if you read these guidances, you'll see words like strongly recommend or should. And in some cases, they use the word shall when it applies to employees in certain industries. Um, I think it's far easier for us to just have a blanket order rather than the shoulds and the shalls and highly recommends. Um, it's, uh, much simpler to do it, uh, to do it uniformly. Um, there is a risk also that we, if we had a mask order, we sort of turned on and turned off and turned on. I think the public would be very confused and so it could be, uh, difficult for, um, people to sort of understand best practices. So for those reasons, I think it makes sense to, um, maintain the order for, at this point.
Thank you very much for your time.
Of course.
Thank you, supervisor Medina. Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Jim Gilio speaking. Uh, oh, my, my, uh, tablet's on. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if my camera is working or not. The, uh, supervisor Medina, um, asked Dr. Giaraducci the, uh, exact question I wanted to ask. I appreciate that. Um, Dr. Giaraducci, the other, the other question I have for you is, um, what I, what I noticed and I had, uh, a lot of, uh, people reach out to me in the, uh, beauty industry regarding, um, salons, uh, hair salons and that sort of thing. And I was trying to help them find the, uh, guidance through the state. So I, I did that a few times and, and I got to know it pretty well. And actually in that guidance, it says, um, you know, um, wearing a mask is, is needed in, in the, uh, beauty guidelines. So my, my, my concern is, is, and not a mask, a facial covering, I'm sorry, I used the wrong terminology. My, my concern is that if we have a duplicative order, that it may cause some confusion. So I would ask you to keep that in mind as we, as we move forward because, um, what I notice about the state guidelines is it already spells out, um, when you should be, uh, wearing a face covering and it essentially lines up with what we're doing here. So as you work on modifying this order, I'd, I'd ask you to please, um, keep that in mind. And then, uh, that's a statement, I guess, and you can respond to that if you like. And then also, um, my last comment would be, um, if we receive a complaint about, uh, schools, whether it's somebody calls into the health department, somebody calls a Board of Supervisors member, we had a, a administrator or a, um, a school teacher that calls us, that's worried about something that's going on. If we can, um, set clear guidance, and I, I spoke with, uh, Tracy, our, uh, Belton, Director Belton, our local, um, health officer, and she asserted to me that they're having weekly meetings with all the superintendents. But as we move forward to school opening, I think it's going to be, we need to make it super clear to our entire community as well as the school districts, who, who are they reporting to? Are they reporting to the state? Are they reporting to the county? Um, and, and when we get these complaints, we need to be. Are they reporting to the county? And, and when we get these complaints, we need to be able to filter them to the right direction. And I just wanted to get your thoughts on that. I know you already addressed schools a little bit with Supervisor Medina. And we don't need to go into too much detail and perhaps Tracy, our Director Belton, can answer this later as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think want to avoid the situation where we are in a position of kind of legislating every little bit, and that's why we're relying on the state guidance. These are
Perfect.
These are guidelines that have been vetted by a large groups of people and it, I think it's important for us to be consistent with our neighbors. But when these conflicts come up or complaints come up, we, I'll, I'll work with Tracy. We need to figure out a, an efficient way to have those addressed. And, and to address the inherent concerns that may have come in the, the complaints, if it has to do with not following the guidelines versus maybe not understanding what the guidelines are trying to achieve.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, as clear as we can from everybody. I know this is a changing world and there's no textbook on, on pandemics. And I know we're, we're, we're working and you guys are frankly doing a great job doing the best you can do with the situation that we have. I just want to try to be as clear as we can as schools start to open, whenever that's going to be, if it's going to be in August or whenever that's going to happen. Thank you.
Okay, of course.
Thank you Supervisor Gillio. Supervisor Bell?
Okay. Thank you, Doctor, for taking the time today. And I was very satisfied with the explanation of the face mask order and your willingness to be a Teflon man.
Thank you.
It, it is, it is hard to take criticism and, and nobody knows it more than supervisors.
Yes.
And you, you certainly probably, it's relatively new. But I support what you're doing. I think it's very important that we continue down this path so we could maintain our variant, open up more businesses, put more people back to work and improve our local economy as best we can as we go forward. You know, and I could see where the, the face mask order is absolutely essential in, in public places and inside closed areas. I know a lot of the guidances for, you know, businesses have a lot to do with sanitation and maintaining that sanitation, even in between, you know, the customers and, and employees. And it, it's just absolutely impossible if a person who's infected sneezes on product or, you know, what have you, and, and there's no question that masks is effective. I, I really believe that. Hundred percent, no. We've seen this study, but I, I've seen studies where it's at least seventy-five percent effective. So I, I'm going to continue to support your recommendations and appreciate your, your expertise on this. The question I have is, you know, in the last couple of weeks, we've seen a number of new cases. We have one in the hospital right now. So we're, we're at a good threshold there. But do you see anything that is out of line compared to other relative counties or all over the state?
Yeah, I will say that compared to some of our other counties, our, our rate of infection, that is the number infections per capita, is a little bit higher. So we're, we still meet all the variants criteria that we needed to meet in order to be a variants county. But obviously, we need to watch it closely. We don't have as much of cushion as may, maybe other places do. You know, given our population of around sixty-two thousand, our, our rate is relatively high and not in the danger zone at this point. I'd say somewhere around yellow to orange. So I think the message I would say is our, our success so far is great, but it's also denier. It's, it's fragile. And I think the worst thing that could happen to us, yeah, both from a, you know, public screen perspective, but also from an economic perspective, is if we, we lose the progress that we made.
Yeah, Supervisor Hernandez and I have been, worked very hard having, you know, workshops with the, the business community and nonprofits. And our emphasis has been, you know, let's try to do our very best and not let our guard down. It, because COVID-19 is going to be with us for, for a while longer. There's no question about it. And I know Supervisor Gillio and I've been concerned about our work, agricultural workforce and try and get, you know, our agricultural workers tested as well. And they, you know, a lot, a lot of them work in close quarters, a lot of them live in close quarters and they're off work. And I think we have to continue that message as well, particularly in that industry, as I've seen in Mauree County. That's really where a lot of our cases are coming from.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I think you point out something that's important to remember is that everybody's been affected by this economically, but our essential workers also tend to be our perhaps lower income workers as well. People that work in our stores, work in, you know, the food service, they work in agriculture. And they are particularly, you know, just we need to keep an eye on that population, recognize how fragile it is for them. They absolutely need the schools to be open because their kids can't be home alone and, and the schools are an important part of that. So if we get to a situation where we're back to stage one, we're back to mid-March like we were, that can be really devastating for them because they need to be at work and there's nobody home to take care of their kids. There's the economic concerns. They're, they're in a position where if they get sick, they can't afford to stay home. Many of them don't even have paid sick fees. And so they're, if they want to eat, they have to go to work sick. And of course, that will compound the situation. So all the support we can get to all sectors of our economy is super important.
And one last thing, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the Doctor for all of his, his work. It's a lot of work going through all these guidances and the changes with the state is just about daily. And we're, we're certainly getting it for money's worth, Doctor. And I really appreciate your willingness to work with our Health Department and Sendar County in the right direction. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Hernandez.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to be clear, I, I mentioned before I came in, I shared to everybody that I've been getting complaints personally about trying to speak to this microphone with the mask on. So, you know, with all respect to those folks that are worried about this virus, I'm just, my, my point is I'm going to, I'll take off my mask just for the sake of speaking clearly to the mic. It just, it feels like a muzzle. It's really hard to speak. So, so I had some questions, Doctor. So, you know, I'll start with the simple one is, is can you explain to me a little bit asymptomatic, the difference between asymptomatic and pre-symptomatic?
Sure. Yeah, pre-symptomatic refers to that period of time when you've caught the illness, but you don't really feel the effects. Within three or four days, you may actually start to feel ill with a sore throat and cough and so forth. That's pre-symptomatic. Asymptomatic, which is really something really remarkable about this virus. There are people that are infected and can infect others that don't even know that they have symptoms. And they never develop symptoms, I should say. They don't, they don't know that they're infected. And that is unlike the previous coronavirus outbreaks that have happened, MERS and SARS, where people, people were not infectious until they were sick. It's what's making this particular one so difficult to contain because of this asymptomatic group. And in fact, I'll tell you a quick story. I had a case recently where, it wasn't in this county, but it was a case recently of a healthcare worker in a nursing home who was feeling fine, but decided, you know, I'm just going to get tested just to, just to be good about it. And she came back positive and she had worked several days after the test came back. And had no idea that she was infectious. And so that's what we're really worried about. People can pay attention to their symptoms, but sometimes they're not even aware they're infectious.
So, so my next question along the line, Doctor, is so you're, from what you're telling me is asymptomatic. There's evidence that you're infectious when you're asymptomatic?
That's right.
So, because I, it's funny, because, you know, and I, I do try to listen to a lot of different folks. I actually talked to a healthcare worker just yesterday and I asked her these questions. And I said, what was, what has been the definition of what it means to be infectious? And she said, well, usually there's a, you know, there's, there's a sign, you know, there's kind of evidence of some kind of, you know, basically the, the symptoms of an illness. And, and when it comes to a virus, it's, there's, there's usually symptoms. And that usually makes you clear on when your infection rates. So I'd, I'd like to see some kind of studies. I think what it means to be asymptomatic and infectious at the same time. I'm pretty sure there's clarity, there should be clarity on what that means to be asymptomatic and infectious. I mean, I think those two should go hand in hand as far as explaining this current situation, right? Because I know historically, from what I'm being told from a healthcare, from the healthcare worker, it's, or to, to be clear, it was a nurse, that you, you basically have to have symptoms to be infectious. And, and I, I know that there's a lot of confusion right now because the WHO is all over the place. The World Health Organization, they just yesterday released, I guess, that they're asymptomatic. It's very rare for you to be infectious. That's literally what they put out. And all of a sudden, they're walking it back. So all this stuff, all this information that's supposedly directly from science folks is, is getting so confusing, it's almost hard to stomach the outcomes, right? Even outside of the, the local policy. You know, how do you, how do you mitigate that when there's all this walking back with information?
Yeah, that, thank you. And I agree with you. It's been a real challenge. I think it points out that we don't, we don't have all the answers. And when we heard, I remember back in early March, I heard reports of this person or that person, this is in worldwide reports, that never had symptoms. And I thought to myself, oh, they must have had something, a mild scratchy throat, maybe a fever they weren't aware of. Because in my experience in medicine, you're absolutely right. In order to, if, you know, unless you're feeling symptoms, you're not infectious. And, and our common advice to people is, you know, don't return back to school or work until you're fever free. Once you're fever free, the infection's gone. You're no longer infectious. And that's true for almost every virus that we deal with. This one appears to be different. And the third percent number is a, is a guess. It's an estimate. I've heard anywhere from ten to fifty. I don't really believe the fifty, but we still need more science. You're absolutely right. The, the point is that there is, there is a number, a small number perhaps, of people that are walking around without even knowing it.
So my, my next question, kind of along the lines of that, that is, uh, I imagine you talk to other public health officers in different counties? And there's other counties, and specifically, which counties have you talked to that don't have a mask order? And are, are they wrong for not having a mask order? And we that, I mean, I guess, do we have this wisdom that they don't have? Like, can you explain to me how other counties aren't, aren't, don't have mask orders, yet we do?
Yeah. I actually looked at the list. There was a survey that just came out amongst the health officers. And I looked at forty-seven counties. I'm going to kind of bring up the spreadsheet here. And the counties that don't have it, for the most part, tend to be very small rural counties. And I kind of put San Benito County somewhere in the middle. We're not Alpine, we're not Modoc, but we're also not Santa Clara or even Monterey. But, you know, the counties that don't have it, Alpine, Calaveras, Calusa, there's Kings County, which is largely, you know, national parks. Madera County is somewhat populated, but they don't have it. Mariposa and Nevada County. And so there's two big ones that don't have it, Ventura and San Bernardino. Although they both have very strong recommendations. The Ventura County officer has mentioned that the only reason he's opposed to it is he doesn't think that the cloth facial coverings are enough. And feels that everybody should be wearing a medical mask. And there's been some, so he's actually in support of it, but not in support of cloth facial masks. The cloth facial masks are a compromise that we had to come up with because of the severe shortage of medical grade people. And if that's helpful for you.
Yes. It, it, I mean, it kind of clarifies, yeah, but it's, it's, it's a moving ball, right? I mean, you can have a mask, you can follow the order here in Samuel County and you leave it to work in a different county. And ultimately, you're dealing with a supposed infection opportunity. And how do we mitigate that, right? That puts us in a tough position. It, you know, ultimately, the, you know, and as it pertains to our economy, this mask order, just in general, it, it puts us in a position that requires something that's hard to mitigate. And I've shared this before, so I'm not going to beat it up. But another question that I have is, is does the mask replace six-foot distancing?
I would think it is layers. And I think that if you're able to maintain six-foot distancing, especially in a well-ventilated area, like outside, I don't think the mask adds much. But once you get within, you know, when you get into closer contact or you're in spaces with high touch surfaces and so forth, then it probably does add some protection. So we recommend both. We recommend both when you can, but I also recognize that when you're out hiking, walking, it doesn't make a lot of sense to wear a mask if you're able to maintain those distances. But if you're in a closer, kind of more crowded situation, like let's say a protest, and you are outside, I think it does make sense in that situation just because you're so close to the people for a prolonged period. I should mention too that we define a significant exposure as being within six feet. You have to be within six feet of somebody for, you know, ten or fifteen minutes. So just passing on a sidewalk, that sort of thing really is a significant exposure. The only exception would be somebody sort of turned their head and coughed into your face, I guess, while that happened. But, you know, barring that sort of weirdness, you know, I, I don't see that being a huge risk in the outdoor setting. So I, I want people to feel okay with not wearing a mask if they're able to maintain that spacing, especially outside. And when you're inside or in your confined spaces, you're in a business setting, it's more important.
So what I'm hearing is
Obviously, you can't wear it while, while you're eating. You can't wear it while you're drinking. There's some exceptions there, but
Yeah. But what I'm hearing is basically the, the mask has really no value when you're six feet apart from each other, or very little to none.
Uh, right. And so I think of it as a layer of protection.
So it's, it's more
So it's in combination with other things. Once you're able to maintain a six-foot distancing, it probably isn't necessary. And our, our, our facial covering order says that. That you're not, it's not mandatory to wear a mask when you're able to maintain that separation.
Okay. So that's clear that, yeah, we don't need a mask if we're six foot apart from each other, it sounds like. And then, so now you mentioned the, the protests this weekend, and I, for one, have always been a, you know, a constitution guy. I love my constitution and the, the rights that it gives us, and ultimately the First Amendment, freedom of expression, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, then obviously freedom to protest. So with that said, you know, I, I completely endorse this weekend's protest. They have a right to do that. I know the health order to a certain extent is, it, it mentions, you know, the state health order mentions protests. It kind of put, puts it along the lines of mass gatherings and it, same thing consistent with the church or religious, you know, congregating, you know. So within that, the rules I know within a building says twenty-five percent or no more than a hundred people. And correct me if I'm wrong, Doctor, but that also applies to protests, right? Not so much, I don't think the twenty-five percent, but I think no more than a hundred people. Is that correct?
Um, you know, I apologize. I need to look at the, the guidelines related to protests. I believe generally speaking, they, they recommend that kind of distancing as much as possible.
Yeah, and I know that the
Possible.
I know the organizers did their best to try, you know, they did ask for distancing and for masks and all that good stuff. Nonetheless, it didn't happen. And while the masks did, I think the majority of folks did. But it actually, I want to say that was, I know Benito like mentioned, there was a thousand people out there. I didn't count myself, so I don't know. And they definitely weren't six foot apart from each other. So nonetheless, I'm, I'm glad they did it. I'm not opposed to it personally, and I've said it before. I'm, I'm personally done with this mask order. Obviously, my colleagues disagree. Or just even in general, the shelter in place. But now when it comes to dealing with the economy, so I know there's a lot of questions. You know, one of the things that definitely has been popping up in my mind is, I'm hearing, you know, from what you shared earlier, that ultimately, we have to control our outcomes, right? We have to control the situation, so much so that we can't allow anybody to get sick, or at least to the extent that it gets out of hand, and then all of a sudden, we're going to have to shut down our economy. So, and it's, you know, as, as a small guy, small business owner, historically, the economy was dependent upon the ability of external factors, right? That there's a lot of things that move and shake your industry, you know, that not, not only the, the your industry, you know, that not, not only the, the economic state, but then dealing with the, an industry that, or dealing with customers that are obviously interested in your product. There's a lot of layers to what it means to grow your business. Um, but now I'm hearing that, uh, now it's dependent upon internal factors. We have to control people's ability from getting sick. Otherwise, um, you know, I guess we're, we're talking about another lockdown. So that being said, how are we trying to guarantee consistency in our economy? Um, only because that's, that's definitely, I mean, in your purview in that sense, right? You, you impact it with, with your health order. How are we going to try to create consistency, even when it comes to understanding this health order, right? Because obviously people didn't understand they're supposed to keep their distance more importantly than wearing a mask, um, this weekend. How are we going to roll that out or make sure that we mitigate that? So that, uh, we don't have businesses going away, because I know that's a reality. And ultimately that impacts our funding streams. So what are we going to do to try to mitigate that, doctor?
I think the point of mitigated is to, uh, make, uh, make sure that we, um, we maintain spread to the extent that we can. You know, the, the reopening is a, um, a trade-off, right? Um, the, uh, the purest way to prevent the spread of this is to keep everybody at home and lock it down. But there's also the recognition that that's not lovable, right? And that you have to have some trade-offs. So we're, we're actually accepting a higher illness rate, um, in exchange for, uh, reopening our economy. And so it really boils down to what's the balance, right? How much, too much on one, on, uh, on the illness rate? And so, uh, how do we mitigate it? It's, I think, continuing to do, uh, it's continuing, continuing to follow the guidelines so that, that we can. Uh, it's continuing to show, um, you know, um, a personal responsibility for, uh, making sure that you, um, are, are considering other people's safety as well as your own. Um, this is a little bit different than, um, you know, wearing a helmet when you're riding a bike. It's, um, this isn't about whether I choose or not choose to take a risk. Um, it's about, um, uh, acknowledging that the people next to you might be more vulnerable to the virus or relatives of the person next to you might be more vulnerable than you are. And so, uh, none of this would work without cooperating with the community. Uh, and, uh, I think that, uh, it does become more of a challenge when the virus is in its kind of low phase like it is right now, because I think people perceive it as not as risky as it was in March, even though it's the same virus that was in March. And, um, and, you know, protests, uh, are obviously motivated by very strong feelings and they should be. And perhaps those have overweight whatever background fears people had. So I guess the bottom line is, um, uh, keeping, keep it spread manageable, um, and, um, and using the kind of traditional public health measures to do that. Uh, we don't have a lot of tools. You know, I'm trying to repair an engine with a screwdriver and sometimes you need a wrench and sometimes you don't have that wrench. And, uh, once, once that happens, then, uh, we'll be able to, to surgically, uh, affect this. But we did buy some time. Uh, the hospitals are more prepared now than they were in March. We have more PPE now than we did in March. We understand it a little bit more. So hopefully, uh, the next wave, which is predicted to happen this fall, we'll be more prepared for it than we were in March. We, we don't have to backtrack like, uh, like we were, um, into stage one.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, doctor. And I, I mean, obviously I understand that, you know, you, uh, y- your focus is obviously public health and, and, you know, that I, I, we had a conversation just recently, which I totally, it was an awesome conversation. I can honestly say that because you were very, you know, you listened, you, you know, you engaged and, and, uh, so it was a good, nonetheless, well, obviously we, we don't agree, but it was respectful. It was a good conversation. Um, so I wanted to make sure people knew that. But, uh, so when it comes down to these questions, right, these are things that we as policymakers on the board of supervisors have to really consider, whether we like it or not. Um, so my point is, is there's certain things that I, I would encourage you to consider, doctor. Not only what I said with consistency in our economy. Um, you know, I, when it comes to the purview of growth, I'm actually hearing there's, there's businesses that are looking, that are no longer looking to invest in growth, because ultimately they're, they're hesitant, right? Or at least for the time being, ha- investment would be, uh, uh, you know, it put, basically put us in the position as almost like this health order is, uh, trying to assume that this market's going to grow when they don't know if they're still going to be in lockdown. So now rehiring is, uh, is not happening in certain industries, uh, a long-term game plan. You know, I'm hearing about industries actually leaving our community. Uh, um, so, or, or, you know, just recently there was a restaurant that it looks like they might be shuttering their doors. They're having to do a GoFundMe to try to keep themselves open. So there's a lot of things to consider and I just wanted to encourage you to think about that. Uh, and then the other, the last thing I was going to mention and I'll, I'll I'll cede the floor is, um, is trying to avoid division and discrimination, uh, and the burden ultimately, you know, if at any way possible, addressing obviously the, the, the constitutional rights of the people. These are some things that we cannot ignore, whether we like it or not. Uh, there's a lot of division, there's discrimination, there's folks basically being chastised and attacked. Now, because they're not wearing a mask, as if folks are just not wearing it because they're just, they don't care, you know, that's a big assumption. And even when it comes to the business industry, anybody who wants to open is considered a bad business. Because all of a sudden, uh, them trying to take care of their families, I guess, isn't as important as, uh, those folks there screaming to try to keep this, this, this whole thing in, in lockdown. So, and it's been a tough rollout, but I'm just sharing some input that, uh, you know, as a public health officer, working with the board of supervisors, having to deal with us being policymakers and then considering the reality, the other side of the coin that, you know, the world that we don't live in, which is the health world, is, uh, the economy, something we can't ignore, because, uh, I think that's going to have such a major impact. It's slowly happening and there's, and right now the only solution is debt. I know that there's this Heroes Act that's being pushed and, um, it's a debt solution. And debt is not something that, that businesses are interested in, right? They want to be in, in, they want to be solvent. They want to be able to know they have a little bit extra to take care of their families. So I'd really encourage you to consider that when it comes to this, this health order. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez. Okay, uh, doctor, do you have any final comments?
No, I want to thank you for all the great questions and dialogue and, um, uh, we'll keep working together.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, your take may, uh, really, this is Tracy. Hold, hold on Tracy. Um, doctor, please, uh, stay on by. We might ask additional questions later on.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tracy.
I just wanted to ensure, Dr. Gillard, that you are, um, granting the authority to expand into stage three for the guidance that were issued so that the public and the board is clear. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what we were articulating in the conversation, that we are ready to move forward on Friday. Is that correct, Dr. Gillard Ducci?
That's correct, Tracy. Thank you.
Okay. And I, thank you. I appreciate that. And I just wanted to advise the public that we did, um, um, post some general guidance for petition circulation on our website. So, um, I just wanted to, um, ensure that there, that the public and the board of supervisors are aware that there is some guidance for petition circulation on our county website. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments on the board before opening up to the public?
I had a, one, one final comment, Mr. Chair. Well, and I don't know if I should add it to the end after the comment, but it basically has to do with something that I think is, is good for us to talk about is, uh, the impacts and, and Supervisor Medina and Supervisor Gillio mentioned it, when it comes to schools. I think it'd be a good idea to have a joint board meeting to understand how this rollout, because I am, I'm hearing a lot of input uh, about the schools and not knowing, right? They have a three-phase plan and the rollout, and that's because specifically they're not knowing, they're, they're really trying to draw at straws to figure out how to make sure that they're honoring the state order, but at the same time, making sure that they have the attendance, uh, you know, that they need and, and, and ultimately making sure kids are getting educated. There's a lot of questions and I feel like it'd be a good idea for us to have that conversation. And I would, I would recommend personally that we include the whole school district, the high school, um, Spring Grove and, and San Juan Aromas. Uh, I, 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 you know, I, I know that, uh, you know, I, I'd love to, for Crystal to be here, but ultimately I think the schools themselves need to speak directly to us so that we know exactly what the, what the, this rollout, how it's going to impact them and, and how we can help them, whether it's education or whether it's, uh, maybe some, some other game plan that we could work together. And it's not us doing anything besides working with them to help them, uh, with, with this rollout. I know that there's a lot of concerns come, um, basically the start of this next school year and, and there's already a lot of talks about requiring a mask for, for, uh, I know that it's for twelve and older for the middle school, but it's, it's a big mixed, mixed bag. And if we don't have this conversation now, I feel like it's only going to make it worse for the, the unity that we need in our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I'll, and invite in, in conference with, uh, Ray on ability and ca- uh, stakeholders who to invite, uh, to the, thank you Supervisor Hernandez.
Hey, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chair, this is Jim. Um, sorry, sorry, it's, we don't have eye contact here. Sorry about that. Um, I had a conversation earlier today with, uh, Tracy and then also last week, Director Belton about this with the schools and they, um, one of the things she told me was that they're, uh, meeting with all the superintendents on a, um, a weekly basis for about the last month and, um, I, I, maybe Director Belton can talk a little bit more about, um, that. We, we did have the doctor address it a little bit with Supervisor Medina and my question, but, um, it sounds like there is, is, it's definitely a good, good plan in place to move forward. And I think we have either, it's, I, I don't have it right in front of me, eleven or thirteen school districts in our county. And some of them are, you know, you have, um, Jefferson School who has, uh, you know, superintendent, teacher, principal. So there's not a lot of staff there, but there's others that have a ton of staff. So we need to make sure that, in my humble opinion, that all the school districts are getting the same message. And I think that's what, um, uh, the Board of Education, under the direction of, um, Crystal Lamontow is doing, but, um, ma- maybe if Tracy or Director Belton could comment just, just briefly on that and then we can, um, maybe perhaps, like you said, you can meet with Ray about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Tracy?
Sure, I'd be happy to comment. Um, so we do meet every Wednesday morning. Um, Crystal Lamontow from the Council of Ed coordinates the meetings. Every superintendent in San Benito County is on or at least invited to the meeting. Um, the first portion of the meeting will talk about public health issues and then they work internally amongst themselves regarding school issues. And so it's been very informative. Dr. Gillard Ducci has joined one of the calls with them as well. Um, and so we're, we're readily available to them. They're aware. We have an excellent partnership with them. Um, and so right now I believe what the schools are doing is reviewing the guidance and seeing how, um, it is going to roll out in their school system. I know some of the migrant education is probably going to be starting soon, maybe next week, in some of the schools. So I feel like we have a really good relationship with them and we're really working closely with them to roll things out. Um, and so the call is tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Um, and if you choose to, um, maybe have some of the members of the board or sit on the call, um, join the call. I'm sure Crystal wouldn't mind at all. Um, and we can, we can advise accordingly. So.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Gillio. Let me poll the board. Um, Supervisor Patel, will you, in light of the new information, would you still like to host a meeting with school districts and other stakeholders?
Sounds like it's already been happening. I would suggest, uh, maybe interested supervisors, uh, join in on that, uh, conversation and then go from there. And, uh, if we need to, uh, go even further than, than that meeting that's taking place, uh, then, uh, I'm, I'm very of, of course, but perhaps Supervisor Hernandez could kind of, uh, jump in on that meeting, uh, tomorrow and with Wednesday meeting can come back to us.
And I will, I will support your position. Supervisor Gillio, is that okay? Will you support Supervisor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I think, uh, Supervisor Hernandez and Supervisor Gillio, if you guys wish to participate, please so and then feedback back to the board at our next meeting.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, um, my honest opinion, sorry. My honest opinion is, uh, um, there's wisdom in the counsel of many. So we, we, I, I think dissemination of information is really, really tough and it's not so much that they have, they don't have a pulse, but there's always more to grasp. And, and the best outcome would be for us to truly understand these impacts isn't so much filtered information through folks, is making sure we have a public dialogue about it. Because this is something that's impacting people in different ways. There's so much variables to what the impacts are, you know? Does a mom now all of a sudden have to quit her job because she can't, you know, take her, her, uh, you know, she, for her to do that, she's maybe disagreeing with the mask order and she has to do distance learning. That would be her best option, but that's assuming that she has the job to facilitate that. You know, what that means for, uh, the, the staggering of schedules, because I know there was a three-day, two-day, there's like three different options. There's so much to filter and, and, uh, and, and ultimately I think this is why a joint board meeting would make it not only a public dialogue, so that we can understand what those leaders are, are, are hearing, but that we can hear it directly ourselves from the public and understand, you know, there's, there's so many subtle nuances. I don't think it would be wise for us to avoid having a meeting with, with the, the different boards, uh, from the schools. That's my honest opinion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor. If there's any objections from the board members, we will continue as we stated earlier, that would, we will allow this committee to continue. And then, and if Supervisor Gillio and yourself wish to, that we need to discuss this further, we'll talk about it the next meeting. For now, we will go to, uh, public comments. Uh, do we have a speaker?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine, star nine or raise your hand. You'll have three minutes to speak and please state your name for the record. Mecca, if you could please state your name. Mecca, if you could please unmute yourself. I will go to the next person. Suzanne, if you could please state your name. Suzanne, if you could please unmute yourself.
Madam Clerk, is there a technical issue on our side or does it look like it's definitely on the speaker's side?
They're not unmuting themselves.
Okay. If anybody out there wants to speak, please make sure that you unmute yourself. The first two speakers, we weren't able to hear you. We, we can come back to you afterwards. Uh, sorry I jumped in there, Mr. Chair, but I just wanted to make sure you knew what was happening on the, on the DIA side here.
Um, Mr. Chair, maybe it would help if, um, I guess it's do say, or, or clerk, uh, just to, uh, kind of identify the person that I give it, uh, Mecca Nix. Uh, Mecca Nix, please unmute yourself and, and, uh, state your name.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, this is David Patrick.
Thank you, David. Go ahead, David.
Okay. So I, I did a little, uh, research myself, uh, as I usually do before these calls. Uh, so the protest can be a perfect case study for the transmission of COVID-19. Uh, the protest Minneapolis started midday, May twenty-sixth, fourteen days ago. According to the Minneapolis Department of Health, June eighth reported three new cases. Los Angeles started protesting May twenty-ninth. May twenty-ninth, twenty, twenty-nine new cases. June fifth, ten. June second, twenty-one. Uh, the incubation period for COVID-19 is up to fourteen days, but the median time is four to five days from exposure to onset. Based on that data, we should have seen a spike in Minneapolis as early as May thirty-first and in LA as early as June second, but we didn't. But that hasn't in, uh, happened in fact, cases have gone down steadily. I will say the latest can be adjusted, but it doesn't appear that there will be a spike that would back up the health department's claim that social distancing and mask wearing is the proper response. These are numbers from those local agencies. The New England Journal of Medicine, May twenty-first, "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection." Public health authorities define significant exposure to COVID-19 as face-to-face contact with six feet, within six feet with a patient with symptomatic COVID-19 that is sustained for at least a few minutes and some say more than ten minutes or even thirty minutes. The chance of catching COVID-19, passing interaction in public spaces is before minimal. In many cases, the desire, widespread masking is a re- reflexive reaction to anxiety over pandemic. Uh, it appears the school district now wants to continue with this nonsense. I can just tell you now, if the schools do not have a regular schedule and they practice mask wearing and social distancing as well as temp checks, there will be a mass exodus from the schools. I have already decided, uh, based on the preliminary school opening procedures, I will not be putting our child in the public schools. And I have talked to many parents that feel the same way and I encourage them to lift homeschool. I also want to address my area supervisor's comments from last week. I was appalled at his lack of understanding of a representative government. He was extremely insulting and conveyed to those of us that he doesn't agree with, that our voices don't matter because we aren't the majority, that we need to just sit down and shut up because our views aren't in line with his. His lack of knowledge of what a people's representative is left me disgusted. If you do not represent all of your constituents, resign now. You are not fit for the office. I will close by saying, this response is proving every day to be unnecessary and the health department must end-
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Jared, if you could please state your name.
Yes, Jared Gallagher. Can I, Jared?
Yes, sir.
So I want to make a point that was brought up, that said compromise on face masks. So the doctor on here just admitted that cloth masks don't work. We've heard this from everyone. And the response was compromise. That is their compromise. Compromise doesn't equal effect. I'm a little appalled that the compromise, everybody on this panel, is we get to stay working, we're going to put on face masks and then take them off and make jokes about them when the meeting is over. I don't necessarily understand the motives behind it, but I can certainly speak to these people that work in our industry, that can't care for themselves and live in close quarters and don't make enough money to survive. Whoever it was, our supervisor, that said that you've never done anything to support anybody that lives in any close quarters, or increase wages in the area, or speak for the people. You, sir, are deploring. The fact that you would get on here and use your propaganda to incite fear of our migrant workers that supply our essential needs, i- is beyond reason. I don't understand you. I don't understand why you're using your position to manipulate fear. You should resign. The person that shouldn't be on this panel is the individual that took his mask and made a joke. I heard the doctor make several jokes about coughing in people's faces. I don't understand the underlying thing here that's funny to you people. None of this is funny. And if you're trying to make light of ending people's freedoms, I don't find it funny. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
If you could please state your name for the record.
Teresa Black.
Yes, madam.
Hi, I just wanted to know that the numbers from San Benito County are fifty-seven thousand people. We're smaller than they are. We're sixty-two thousand people from what you guys. They have fifty-five confirmed cases. We have sixty-five. They have two deaths. We have two tests. We have one in hospital. So my question is, if we're taking, if, if they don't have masks on, why we have to? We're smaller than they are. We're more rural than they are. Another question that somebody on your site, Facebook, is asking is, what do you guys think we're doing to our kids when we put them into schools with masks on? Tell them not to share their, their toys that they may bring to school, not to share their food that they may bring to school, to separate them off from each other. We're essentially telling those kids exactly the opposite of what the basics that we're teaching them in kindergarten. And then we're gonna, we're gonna further that as we go through middle school, high school, all of the separation that we were trying to teach our children not to do, now we're wanting them to separate. And it just doesn't make any sense at all. The other thing I wanted to say is, why would we wear masks all the time? Why don't you just give all of the storefront thermometers that they check temperatures on the way into the stores? Doesn't that seem like a more, I don't know, negotiable, responsible whole thing? It seems like that would be maybe a compromise instead of making everyone wear a mask. The cost of all of this is ridiculous, in my opinion. I worked in the medical field for twenty-five years, and I never, never, never once needed to wear a mask outside of that hospital away from somebody that was infected. The job was, is you, for the school barman. So as soon as I walked into a patient's room, I put on a mask, I put on my PPE, I took care of that patient, and on the way out, I turned everything off. And you don't wear it away from an infected person. You just don't. So it's, in my opinion, it's just ridiculous to, to have to do this around our county. And one last thing, if a business owner being here in town is perfectly and utterly prepared for everything that you've asked her to be prepared for, why can't you open up? That was a question.
You cannot answer during public comments.
Well, then you can think about it. I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker card.
Salvador, if you could please state your name.
Yes, this is Salvador Mora, resident of San Benito County. I'm calling it not to persuade anyone to pick sides or change their opinion, because I think by now people have decided how they feel about everything. But the one thing I would like, not just the community, but also I'd like the leaders, officials, let's say leader officials, to remember is that, you know, we be kind to one another. We may not always agree, may not have the same opinions. We should be respectful of one another. That goes to people on both sides of the issue. I have my opinion, and for the moment, I keep it to myself before I speak with this friends. And I have friends that are on both sides of the issue. And we talk about it, we debate it, but we're respectful of one another. There should be no one attacking another person just because they have tons of opinions, or if they choose to wear a mask, facial covering, or they do not to. Unfortunately, I witnessed a person rape a teenager at a grocery store because he removed his mask because he was having heartaches. And I spoke to the things that we shouldn't be doing. You know, we all have choices in life. I choose to wear a facial covering when I go to a business that requires it. I absolutely hate it. I don't like it. It makes you feel uncomfortable, but I do it. I choose not to, to be confrontational to a business owner or a business employee because they choose to follow a facial covering. They all don't like it, but they do it so that they can stay in business and not potentially get fined or lose their business license. I think that's the thing that we should remember, is if some business, some business owners are following it because they want to make money and survive, let's be mindful of that and at least not give those business owners and employees a hard time and harass them. At the same token, you know, those that truly believe that wearing a facial covering, you know, is considered as a form of oppression or against our rights, you know, you know, they're entitled to that opinion as well. I don't necessarily disagree with them. But if you truly are against something, you can have to lie or use a fake medical excuse to get around from wearing a facial covering. I think that's utterly ridiculous. It shows a lack of character. I've seen it on Facebook, on social media, where people are passing around this fake document. It's ridiculous, because those that truly have medical conditions, I mean, it's offensive for them, you know. And if someone is truly against something, then practice it. You know, I don't always agree with everything that Hunter Finales says.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for asking for Rob Banowski?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, once again, for allowing me to speak. I, speaking just to encourage the Board of Supervisors to keep a very open mind about having a joint meeting between itself and elected other school boards, this is a big deal. The school situation is a big deal to the community. And even though we're charged with it as school districts, there's no way we could be effective unless we try to get everybody on the same page, whether, you know, we're moving in a direction of opening up schools as normal or some hybrid. I can tell you, we have our own school board meeting tonight, and I believe that we're going to get the result of a poll. But just seeing what I'm seeing in the community, a majority of people want their kids back to school for a lot of reasons. But it's a huge challenge. And having the conversation with, with the Board of Supervisors and other school districts, all getting the same message, I think a lot of good would come out of it. Because we know that you guys are getting phone calls on this, and, you know, as we are too. The superintendent meeting that you're referencing, that is a meeting between superintendents, and I'm very familiar with it because of who I'm married to. And the flavor of that meeting is very different than elected officials getting together. Because remember, when the elected officials are talking together and we come up with things, the administrators are listening to see what direction they might want to take us. But I am a strong advocate of let's get together and, and chat, because I can tell you unequivocally, there is confusion out there as to, wait, who are we supposed to be listening to? What does the county have authority over? What role do they play? Because I'm witnessing it firsthand as I sit here. So please reconsider having that meeting amongst the elected officials and allowing some back and forth to occur. Because the problem we have in so many of what, things like this, is the dial, there is no dialogue. It's me speaking, and you are not allowed to, well, you can respond because it's on the agenda. You choose not to respond. And I understand the practical reasons why you have to do that. Let's have the dialogue. Let's work together on this. Because it is as big a deal, if not bigger, than shutting down businesses. Because you can make up shutting down businesses a little bit through stimulus if you're lucky. You cannot shut down or remake the education scene.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hunter Cunningham? So suddenly, it was okay for a thousand people to gather on Saturday, including many of our local officials, when it's for a politically approved reason. And I have no problem with protests, obviously, is, it's a first amendment right. But for these, for months, these same officials who on Saturday gathered in protest were telling us that we couldn't gather in group tent to even bury our loved ones. We couldn't gather in churches. We couldn't allow our kids to have a normal graduation ceremony. Let me enlighten you guys on something. The amount of people in our hospital dying from COVID-19 is the same amount of black men being murdered by our local law enforcement. The answer is zero. Zero. There is no health crisis in San Benito County, and there is no police brutality crisis in San Benito County, yet you are using both of these non-issues to create more tension, fear, and distrust amongst the people of our community. So now that it's obvious you guys went along with the biggest heist this country has ever seen, and even the WHO announcing yesterday that the virus is not spread by asymptomatic people, which is the whole reason for justifying throwing healthy people at work and forcing them in lockdown. Will you lift this mask order and deactivate the Soviet tradition of snitch hotlines at the health department? Are you guys aware that snitching was practiced and encouraged by communist authorities so they could turn citizens against each other and justify the crackdown on peace of citizens who exercise religious freedom or operate a business? Do you want to be remembered as men who align themselves with the principles and ideas of communism, or by managing facial coverings they do in Saudi Arabia? How about standing for liberty and the principles of the US Constitution? Or go ahead, like one supervisor did last week, and cause anger and selfish because we want to return some decency and dignity to our community? I've spoken with dozens of families in the past eight or four hours, and I can tell you that if these orders aren't lifted, there's going to be a mass exodus from public schools. My children go to Spring Grove. We love the school staff and teachers there, but you're insane if you think I'm going to drop our kids off, leave them with adults in masks doing temp checks and distancing them from friends. Many others share the sentiment. I ask that this mask order be addressed again by the board and health officer in context of WHO's announcement about asymptomatic areas. Also, I want to make an argument for the separation of medicine and state. The separation of church and state, the argument for it is that it invites oppression. But I want to hear a thoughtful argument of why we should have the merger of medicine and state. It's proven to be a merger of the same oppression tyranny, maybe greater.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hello, thank you. My name is Brittany Evans, and I am from Malaga Studio. I first want to speak on the research that's been going on in regards to asymptomatic. That regard has been looked at as far as the common cold and also the flu. Thing is that throughout this entire process, COVID-19 has a recovery rate of ninety-eight percent and higher. These orders do not, are not equally represented as far as this quote-unquote emergency crisis. This is adjustment to our community. Connecting with other humans is more important than you may think. Social connections can lower anxiety, depression, help us regulate our ocean, higher self-esteem, empathy, and improve our immune system. By neglecting our need to connect, you're putting our health at risk. As adults, we can stand here and speak for ourselves, but what about the poor youth who are just led to believe that they need to follow orders? In addition, there are restaurants out there being threatened by the health department. There's no probable cause for this. And since when can the health department just come in and violate the fourth amendment right to threaten these businesses that they must close, when clearly stated these are recommendations and are self-certified? But this is not something that's required. Most restaurants think, or places of business thinks that they're going to be closed because it's the quote-unquote law. What about privacy laws? What about freedom of religion? You cannot say that one group is okay to gather and another one is not. None of this makes sense. I have four children, and they will not go to school under these circumstances. This is ridiculous, and I urge the board to listen to the people. When you have these meetings, have non-stakeholders there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker.
Nora, if you could please unmute yourself. I will go to the next person. Elia, if you could please state your name.
Hi, this is Elia Salina. Thank you for taking my call. First of all, I'd like to start off with saying that San Benito County has not lost its dignity. We are well above dignity. San Benito County Supervisors, I want to thank all of you for going, being one of the first ones to go ahead and do the shelter in place and then went on with the facial masks. We teach our kids from a very young age to have respect for rules and regulations. And this is what we're doing. We're, we are a majority of people that may be silent, but we are following the rules because we believe that this is what is right, is being respectful to each other, so that if we are sick and we're just seeing the symptoms, we do not pass this to anybody else. School boards, as you all are aware, Board of Supervisors, I don't have to tell you, but I'm just putting it out to the public, those are elected officials. So, Mr. Banowski, I agree with you to listen to the representation of elected officials, but the school boards are elected officials. And I believe it is a duty of the school board, the school board, the school superintendents, the state superintendent, and the public health department of the state, that they're the ones who are looking out for the best interest of our children. That is our main focus. If supervisors want to join the board meetings, they're completely free to do so, but it's not up to the Board of Supervisors, San Benito County, to dictate what the schools do or do not do. That is up to the state superintendent, and that is up to the state's public health department. I also want to focus on farmworkers. I am, I am advocating for farmworkers to get tested. They're not being tested at high volume as they should be. They are essential workers. And we need to do some type of advocating as a group, and not just a few of us out there literally walking the field and talking to farmworkers. and not just a few of us out there literally walking the field and talking to farm workers. Also, um, I'd like to point out that there are many, many people who were able to apply for the PPP money. And those were people that applied because their businesses were affected by this. There's also going to be money available from the county through care programs. Um, but there's also people who qualified and worked on some of the PPP money and they never stopped operating. The PPP list of companies is going to be public. And once we get the list of those that got publicly, it is against the law to take PPP money while you were completely operating in districts following the state mandate. That'll be it, thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker, Kurt.
Hi, this is Big Anna, resident of San Bernardino County.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's a little hard to sit here and listen to this public report. I've got to tell you, with all due respect, Dr. G is a government worker. He takes orders from the health officials at the state level. And all the government health officials talk to each other in all the counties. And they can stand in a circle and agree with each other all they want, but that doesn't mean they're representing their constituents. And dear board supervisors, I have to say, you are not either, except for Peter. And it's very hard for us to sit here and have you guys bring on Dr. G, who couldn't be bothered to show up at the last two or three meetings, to give us a lecture and threaten us, oh, if we go backwards, we're going to have to do the mask, and to tell us that how many counties have mandatory mask orders? They do not provide the list. What Dr. G said was that the health officials in a majority of the counters, counties, agree with each other, big deal. Heard immunity is a law of nature. It is not a matter of public policy. It is not a matter of belief. It is what it is. And that is how human beings have evolved and survived for thousands of years. And to shelter and place the healthy and to mask the healthy violates that law of nature. The rest of us out here know it. I don't understand why you don't, okay? Doctors that are health officials, sorry, you're not purchasing medicine and not following the science because there's plenty of science out there that contradicts you. Okay? Secondly, the reason for this special meeting is probably because you're getting a lot of pushback, especially from schools. Parents are pissed and the schools are in danger. And so I just want to tell all the parents out there, Freedom Project Academy. Freedom Project Academy, freedomforschools.com. It is an online, uh, homeschooling system where parents can group together and put all their kids together so some can go to work and some can take care of educating their kids. If, if we're going to be subject to this ridiculousness for our kids to school, I, I don't have kids, but I'm with you, I would pick mine out as well. The other thing that you guys need to understand is something that we know, is according to California law, a local health emergency can only be called if there is an imminent and proximate threat of introduction of an infectious disease. Not some, a disease that came three months later. It's got to be imminent. I'm sorry, if China had this flu out in November and as early as October, it was all over Europe and it's been all over our country too. This is ridiculous and we're worried about this at the end of March.
Thank you, madam.
Good afternoon, Nima's Emily Scaul. Um, I am putting on here again to ask that you lift a mask requirement in San Bernardino County to a recommendation, not a requirement. Can we please have some action items put on the agenda for next week's meeting? You just said yourselves that the masks are not effective if they are homemade. The president himself on Friday, uh, said that we need to open back up. So, social distance as you can, wash your hands and wear a mask if you want. The doctor last week on the meeting talked about the rise in 51/50 and mental health at Hazel Hawkins. He said maybe masks should be a recommendation, not a requirement. I talked to nurses at Hazel Hawkins and said the same thing as well. Um, I won't even bring my daughter to town because she was verbally attacked by a lady yelling at her to put a mask on, saying she could have the virus. Do you know how scary that is to an eight-year-old girl? You are enforcing it but not educating people and store employees on the fact that children under a certain age don't need a mask and people with health restrictions don't have to wear a mask. Last, I would like to ask, board supervisor De La Cruz, will he enforce a mask requirement? But last week at the meeting, we all saw him get off, take off his mask as he called recess and the camera was still on him. If the virus also takes recess, I think De La Cruz needs to make a public apology for taking off your mask and being a hypocrite. That is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hunt, next speaker.
Metta, next, San Bernardino County. So it seems like, so it seems like the World Health Organization recommendations were followed very quickly to shut down this economy. So logic states you would also follow it now, correct? They have recently said that surface, surface and asymptomatic transmission is almost non-existent, thereby making the whole shutdown null and void. And I have gleaned from the doc statements here today that masks of the non-medical grade sort are just not that effective. We basically must use them to please the king of California and to make others that may be afraid feel better. Those reasons are not good enough to continue the mandatory order. Not a single one of you condemned the massive march this past weekend due to COVID-19 concerns. The reason for gatherings is absolutely irrelevant. If one is condoned at full capacity, all should be condoned at full capacity. You, our mayor, our police and sheriff's offices, and our city council have clearly signaled to the rest of us that it is perfectly fine to get back to our normal lives. Now do the right thing and lift every COVID-19 related restriction now. Thank you.
Thank you, madam.
Hi, Kevin Barcella from Hollister. Just want to, um, have much additional to say from, uh, my comments from previous weeks. Uh, I want to thank the board for continuing to, to keep the mask ward in place. Uh, observational evidence from every country that has been successful in fighting the virus indicates that mask wearing is an important part of reducing the rate of transmission of the virus. Uh, and we should continue to do so. Um, do want to, uh, do want to address the comments about the protests over the weekend? Um, yes, there are, everything's a trade-off, life's a trade-off. Um, however, the, the organizers of the event and every participant in the event, uh, was masked. Um, and that was, you know, that was a recognition that this activity is higher risk staying at home. But everybody was responsible, uh, wore their masks, kept as much distance as they could, considering the number of people that came out. And again, I want to, um, want to just thank, uh, the police department, sheriff's department, and the, the, the city council of Hollister for, um, putting on, supporting the event that, uh, that ended up being so successful. Uh, and that's all I had to say. Uh, again, thank you so much for, um, continuing to look after the public health, regardless of what the, uh, the law minority is saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, wait, yeah, Mr. Chair, we, we have no more, um, public comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the board. Any final thoughts on the board before we continue?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just for the record, I wanted to see if, if we could poll the board to see if we can bring back that, that we can do a board meeting with the, the other schools. Uh, you know, if you guys say no, then I personally, I'm okay with it, but I, I want to know if, if I can get support to have a public conversation with the schools.
Supervisor Batella, have your, has your position changed?
No.
Thank you. Supervisor Gilio.
No, sir, I will make one comment, uh, on this as well. Uh, is, there is a, uh, it sounded like, um, that one of the directors or trustees mentioned that there was a board meeting tonight. I would suggest that we, as a county, advertise the, the board meeting as well on our social channels if possible, if, if it's something that, um, the school district wants us to do to help allow, make sure that there's plenty of, um, notice and public, uh, comment and, um, uh, the ability for the public to engage with those elected folks. And then what I would suggest is we, um, see how the, uh, I think supervisor, if, if, if you choose, I'm not putting you on the spot, but if you choose to join the meeting tomorrow with the superintendents, maybe what you could do is poll them because they're, like I said, I, I believe it's 11 school districts. I apologize, I'm drawing a blank, it might be 13, I have both numbers in my head, I think it's 11. Um, that, that all of them want to, wanted to participate and, and the logistics of that may be a bit of a challenge, but, um, I think that would be the appropriate time to do that. So I, I think we should continue in the direction we're going in the short and then help, uh, if there are any, uh, public meetings at different school districts, help make sure that the, the community knows about those. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gilio. Um, the response is no, Superintendent Hernandez?
If I can get support for the, to have a public meeting, I still, yeah, I would like to attend, definitely.
You're more often to attend. Just a reminder that there is a brown mat violating in place.
Let me take it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, all right, uh, we'll go to closed session, Barbara?
No, no, closed session. Uh, closed session number one is a conference with legal counsel, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to subdivision D four of Government Code Section 54956.9, number of cases, one.
Then one from the public, the wish of the closed session item. Thank you, okay, we will take a five-minute break to allow to facilitate into closed session, uh, Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you.